All right, so we have a forum, so we will get started.
That's all right. No peeking there.
And I just want to introduce ourselves. Detective Sarah Plazin.
How do you know? That's tsunami. Carrie the nurse.
Patricia Raven.
Karen Thompson, Director.
Okay, very good. So we're going to do the first item is the approval of any minutes. In the little box. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah.
You want me to read them out, or do you want to just?
Did anybody not read them? I wrote them. I got them.
I wrote one.
I did. Okay. Accept them?
So we have to move to acceptance minutes. Seconds, right? Function made in seconds, all in favor? All right. Okay. The director's report.
All right, and first I want to let everyone know I have attached new financials because the other ones had one erroneous entry that affected multiple areas. So this is the true budget synopsis and funds. And we're pretty much right on track. We did go over our building expenses because of some H-bath issues we had this year, but the town is helping with that, so that should be good for funds. All right, so policies up for board approval or finalization are the home delivery policy and guidelines. The guidelines don't actually have to get relied on, just the policy, but they do work together, so they're paired together. An emergency closing policy from 2012 that I found last week that is, I believe, incorrect and needs just tweaking. And then a confidentiality policy which is new. And I can go on if you want to do the policies after the report under your business, you can do it there or you can do it now. It's up to you. I can just keep on going.
Okay.
All right. Still no update on the union things. I have a lead on staff training to deal with patrons who might have some challenges or who might have trouble controlling their emotions or learning how to de-escalate situations, things like that, from a workshop that I took a couple of weeks back. And a woman was fantastic. And she has a criminology background, but she's a librarian. And her approach is so welcoming, like taking all different populations and asking the question, how do we make it so that they can stay? Versus low libraries want to keep below. So really liked her approach. And so we're going to do an online meeting together to see what she might be able to do for staff. Then I think she and I are going to meet next Monday, Monday. So she's just, she's so good, it's exciting. Really, it's just, she was inspired. As far as collections, we've been right along with the local history room project. I've been placing some orders. Right now I'm trying to figure out our account scale and get a whole bunch of materials, orders, so that they can start preparing and storing things properly. So those, that's the next step going on here.
So she has been going through the material in the local history room?
Right, to figure out, she looks at each piece we've got in there and figures out what do we need to store this proper, properly.
Okay.
And there's, there's a lot that's needed.
I guess I don't recall a lot of this. I mean, what she's doing in her assessment, is she determining if it's something that's worth keeping?
Yep.
Where it should be kept?
Right, is it a duplicate? Is it something that we wanted to digitize as well as store?
Okay.
And how are we going to store it and where and room? And what kind of layout, I guess?
So I guess some of the stuff would be stored in secured closets?
We're going to, that remains to be determined. Haven't got that far in the discussions yet because the goal is to make things as accessible to people as we can. If there are some things, Katie and I were just talking about some things that we have that are from the 1800s that you do need to wear gloves, to special gloves, minority gloves, to work on and things like that. So maybe things like that won't be lacked, but you know, on request will give people gloves to look for things like how it works. That will be part of what Katie's kind of teaching in the new manual.
People who actually have access, when they go in there, they can just take things off the shelf or out of the cabinet or whatever?
Yep.
Okay, they don't have to get permission to have somebody access it for them?
Not right now.
Okay. Will she be determining if that's going to change or not?
We haven't talked about it yet, but we're still in like the early kind of fact finding stages, but I think it's a good question. Yeah, and we do have locked file cabinets that are from the historical society. So there is a place for locked items, so.
Most of the cabinets have locks on them.
They do. We'll have to see where those keys are.
Yeah, no, that was, that was a challenge in the past. You had to watch, you didn't have the keys.
Right.
But it's not unusual to have special things locked and locked. Right.
Yeah, it's just determining which ones necessitate that versus which ones can be used.
And that's great that she'll identify what that is and will know that going forward. It's great.
And we're not getting to, even some things, they might be duplicates, but they might be, if they're so particular in newery, you know, you don't want people to have to go to town hall and do a special request. You know, if you have the space to keep a duplicate here and make it easier for somebody to do the local history stuff, we want it all as accessible as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's two people could be doing simultaneous work.
Sure, yeah.
Not that it may happen, but it might.
So that's the right one. Oh, and we are going to have 25th anniversary coming up soon in 2025. So I asked Katie as she goes through all of these materials from scrap plugs to photos and just tons of stuff to make note of anything that may be gold keys or whatever we decide to do for the 25th anniversary. So she's doing that. On the building and grounds, did you want to field that one? Or aside from my written here, we did meet with James this morning. Get a little bit more information on how to go forward on some of the bigger projects.
Yeah, we actually, we've talked to James a couple of times and met with him today along with Tracy and Lilian, who was town accountant, to discuss some of the potential projects that we've had in mind for a while, like the generator, security cameras, handicap accessibility to the bathrooms and to this room. And we talked about swipe code for the main doors opposed to keys that are controlled, who actually has access to the building, when they actually access the building, that would be recorded. They have a timeline on the code, so if it doesn't get returned, time runs out, you can't produce again. And we talked about future in terms of building systems. Hitting that 25-year mark, building systems are going to need to be replaced. My encouragement was that we should focus on looking at doing things that are sustainable going forward, whether that be replacing the roof when it's nested when it's required and putting on solar panels. Looking into the possibility of doing geothermal wells along with heat pump systems. How does that work? And then again, previous conversation with James, we talked about putting in motion activated sensors for lighting in offices and rooms and walking to the room, lights on and the lighting lights go on. Same thing with the main area of the building where we have so much natural light coming in, but we still have lights on. That may not be necessary, so there are systems that are in place that we could utilize. So talked about the possibility of doing some planning for that and looking at funding sources. Yes, the town is in the process of getting certified as a green community. There's a number of.
It's a better name.
Okay.
All right, so we have a forum, so we will get started.
That's all right. No peeking there.
And I just want to introduce ourselves. Detective Sarah Plazin.
How do you know? That's tsunami. Carrie the nurse.
Patricia Raven.
Karen Thompson, Director.
Okay, very good. So we're going to do the first item is the approval of any minutes. In the little box. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah.
You want me to read them out, or do you want to just?
Did anybody not read them? I wrote them. I got them.
I wrote one.
I did. Okay. Accept them?
So we have to move to acceptance minutes. Seconds, right? Function made in seconds, all in favor? All right. The director's report.
All right, and first I want to let everyone know I have attached new financials because the other ones had one erroneous entry that affected multiple areas. So this is the true budget synopsis and funds. And we're pretty much right on track. We did go over our building expenses because of some H-bath issues we had this year, but the town is helping with that, so that should be good for funds. All right, so policies up for board approval or finalization are the home delivery policy and guidelines. The guidelines don't actually have to get relied on, just the policy, but they do work together, so they're paired together. An emergency closing policy from 2012 that I found last week that is, I believe, incorrect and needs just tweaking. And then a confidentiality policy which is new. And I can go on if you want to do the policies after the report under your business, you can do it there or you can do it now. It's up to you. I can just keep on going.
Okay.
All right. Still no update on the union things. I have a lead on staff training to deal with patrons who might have some challenges or who might have trouble controlling their emotions or learning how to de-escalate situations, things like that, from a workshop that I took a couple of weeks back. And a woman was fantastic. And she has a criminology background, but she's a librarian. And her approach is so welcoming, like taking all different populations and asking the question, how do we make it so that they can stay? Versus low libraries want to keep below. So really liked her approach. And so we're going to do an online meeting together to see what she might be able to do for staff. Then I think she and I are going to meet next Monday, Monday. So she's just, she's so good, it's exciting. Really, it's just, she was inspired. As far as collections, we've been right along with the local history room project. I've been placing some orders. Right now I'm trying to figure out our account scale and get a whole bunch of materials, orders, so that they can start preparing and storing things properly. So those, that's the next step going on here.
So she has been going through the material in the local history room?
Right, to figure out, she looks at each piece we've got in there and figures out what do we need to store this proper, properly.
Okay.
And there's, there's a lot that's needed.
I guess I don't recall a lot of this. I mean, what she's doing in her assessment, is she determining if it's something that's worth keeping?
Yep.
Where it should be kept?
Right, is it a duplicate? Is it something that we wanted to digitize as well as store?
Okay.
And how are we going to store it and where and room? And what kind of layout, I guess?
So I guess some of the stuff would be stored in secured closets?
We're going to, that remains to be determined. Haven't got that far in the discussions yet because the goal is to make things as accessible to people as we can. If there are some things, Katie and I were just talking about some things that we have that are from the 1800s that you do need to wear gloves, to special gloves, minority gloves, to work on and things like that. So maybe things like that won't be lacked, but you know, on request will give people gloves to look for things like how it works. That will be part of what Katie's kind of teaching in the new manual.
And people who actually have access, when they go in there, they can just take things off the shelf or out of the cabinet or whatever?
Yep.
Okay, they don't have to get permission to have somebody access it for them?
Not right now.
Okay. And will she be determining if that's going to change or not?
We haven't talked about it yet, but we're still in like the early kind of fact finding stages, but I think it's a good question. Yeah, and we do have locked file cabinets that are from the historical society. So there is a place for locked items, so.
Most of the cabinets have locks on them.
They do. We'll have to see where those keys are.
Yeah, no, that was, that was a challenge in the past. You had to watch, you didn't have the keys.
Right.
But it's not unusual to have special things locked and locked.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it's just determining which ones necessitate that versus which ones can be used.
And that's great that she'll identify what that is and will know that going forward. It's great.
And we're not getting to, even some things, they might be duplicates, but they might be, if they're so particular in newery, you know, you don't want people to have to go to town hall and do a special request. You know, if you have the space to keep a duplicate here and make it easier for somebody to do the local history stuff, we want it all as accessible as possible.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's two people could be doing simultaneous work.
Sure, yeah.
Not that it may happen, but it might.
So that's the right one. Oh, and we are going to have 25th anniversary coming up soon in 2025. So I asked Katie as she goes through all of these materials from scrap plugs to photos and just tons of stuff to make note of anything that may be gold keys or whatever we decide to do for the 25th anniversary. So she's doing that. On the building and grounds, did you want to field that one? Or aside from my written here, we did meet with James this morning. Get a little bit more information on how to go forward on some of the bigger projects.
Yeah, we actually, we've talked to James a couple of times and met with him today along with Tracy and Lilian, who was town accountant, to discuss some of the potential projects that we've had in mind for a while, like the generator, security cameras, handicap accessibility to the bathrooms and to this room. And we talked about swipe code for the main doors opposed to keys that are controlled, who actually has access to the building, when they actually access the building, that would be recorded. They have a timeline on the code, so if it doesn't get returned, time runs out, you can't produce again. And we talked about future in terms of building systems. Hitting that 25-year mark, building systems are going to need to be replaced. My encouragement was that we should focus on looking at doing things that are sustainable going forward, whether that be replacing the roof when it's nested when it's required and putting on solar panels. Looking into the possibility of doing geothermal wells along with heat pump systems. How does that work? And then again, previous conversation with James, we talked about putting in motion activated sensors for lighting in offices and rooms and walking to the room, lights on and the lighting lights go on. Same thing with the main area of the building where we have so much natural light coming in, but we still have lights on. That may not be necessary, so there are systems that are in place that we could utilize. So talked about the possibility of doing some planning for that and looking at funding sources. Yes, the town is in the process of getting certified as a green community. There's a number of steps that we have to do in order to qualify for that. And once you do, you're eligible for a certain amount of grant funds from various areas. And then the bottom line is, we have other grants that are available also. So I think we want to start thinking about some of that. Nothing imminent, we just do some planning and investigative work to see what's available. The generator seems to be the thing that Alex had done some research on that and had started developing a specification for it. So consensus today at the meeting was that we should go forward with that, utilizing what Alex had done as the basis to build on that.
And then is the select board approved already?
Yes, as part of the ARPA funding. It was $80,000 approved by the selectmen for that. What we need to do is put the specification together. One of the things I was wrapped up in, process and procedure all the time, which statute did we have to follow in order to do this? Because there's multiple statutes that deal with buildings and construction. So I think the determination was there is the Office of Services, Operational Services Division, OSD, under which falls COMBIES, which is the state award. They put up these massive contract and then come back with qualified people. We can go to that with this, once we get the specification put together. They've already vetted these people, they've responded, so instead of us having to put it out to bid, we can send three people on that list and get proposals from them. That would expedite the process. So things are in motion, we're going to start working on these and going forward. Again, James had accepted, Tracy and Lilian were very cooperative and actually very helpful today.
Who creates the RFP for this, the question?
We do. And that was one of the questions I had. Would we, should we hire an engineer or architect to do any of this stuff at the time? The consensus was if we were able to get proposals from vendors, we could utilize those to formulate an RFP, if you would. I have something, and that's what Alex basically did. He had two people committed to give him a cost estimate and I'm doing the project. That's where the $80,000 came from. So based on what they provided, that became the basis for what he developed. And there's a whole host of other things that the state requires be included in it, certifications for office.
When we're going to put in a replacement, we're going to put a concrete pad for the house.
It's going to be on a concrete pad.
So it's not, no, simply ironed and indented.
No, 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 no. This, no, there's the state, and I was able to find online after our meeting, a contract, the University of Mass load, U load, put out on a backup generator. And it has all of the required language from the state requires. So other than the specific about the generator, which we have based on what Alex was able to garner, all of those other things dealing with simple things like conflict of interest, prevailing wages, insurance requirements, all of that documents that the contractor has to sign and verify, that's all included in this particular document. So that will become the basis for what will be put together as a document. And then we'll spread it around, share it with everybody, and everybody has a chance to assess and evaluate and say, I don't understand this, should have this, should have that. Especially with James and Lilian taking a look at it, they should be able to policy agree on all the pieces in place. So that's kind of where that's at.
And I'm seeing if there is any funds or if they're going to find out for me. If there are any funds left in ARPA that I might be able to go for that solar turn station out there? And if we can, you know, James said that the private would be able to put the pad in for us. We just need more of the concrete. This is just a point stuff.
A few years ago, we were either on the meeting, GNI and me, a guy from the electric company talked about this in the parking lot and looked at, discussed locations.
No.
And the cameras.
For this Saturday?
For the charging station.
Oh, my goodness.
Because there are, I mean, the electric company is really eager to defray some of the costs and jack up their rates for them.
And we are getting the two electric power stations.
Right. You know, I don't have any of the informations anymore. I certainly don't have it in my brain. A man once did for five or 10 minutes. But, but there was, there was a contact person and the National Grid came over with a specialist, installation specialist, and came really cool over. Because it does take up space, it does remove parts. You know, and channeling it into the library's electric system was complicated.
Yeah, this is, this doesn't channel in, this is just that unit.
I know, but it has to get its juice from somewhere. So, smaller power.
Yeah.
Just completely new.
It's so.
So National Grid will want that.
No.
But no, maybe some, maybe some solar company doesn't.
Well, I have a company, that's where I got, yeah, that's where I got the figures and you can just.
Sorry, never mind.
Oh, no.
The charging station for the cars, the electric cars, they're moving forward without an error.
Right, that'll be this year.
Is that solar as well, or I mean?
No, that would be, that would be coming off of old solar. So what's the solar, and then here's where, so you're talking about?
I'm talking about one, it's one little picket table.
Oh, that thing.
Silver to charge.
Sorry, so the solar powered kiosks.
Totally electric. They can access, close enough to the building that they can access Wi-Fi when they're closed, but they can power the laptop or whatever. It's just free standing. No wiring involved.
So you'll pay for that? So the electric car charging stations, they're going to be connected to the library's electric? So where are they getting charged?
There'll be a pole, this pole at the end of the lot.
Okay.
At least the last conversation I had.
So who pays for that?
James is handling this.
The town is willing, not the library.
Now, this is a big job from where we were a few years ago.
Exactly, we didn't want to go forward because we didn't really have touched this before, but they're doing it, they're doing two stations here with stubs for two additional stations, depending on how it grows in the future. And I guess they're doing two at the Central Street Fields also.
Because one of the issues is digging up, trenching the.
Yeah, so we'll be, it's not, my understanding is we are, ours is back right now.
Yep.
At the end of the parking lot, those would be the two parking spaces it would be taking, so and hopefully they're not having to trench into the parking lot at wood, because there's grass there and you'll be able to put whatever they have to do. That's my understanding.
So when that goes, so that's a separate account?
Separate account, dealt by the town. It's nothing to do with us.
And the reason I'm asking is they were talking about the baseball field with the lights. Apparently they had gone to the woman and/or the family and asked permission to use lights at night. And they said, okay, but only after, no, only up to 8 o'clock. So I was like, where is that being connected? And who's paying for that?
I don't think.
Well, I don't know, he said that about the water too.
Yeah, that's obvious.
This is a new, a new thing about the lights?
Yeah.
But are we going to use James, so we kind of just cut that to the our larger projects, like the generator? But our meetings with James, we kind of just covered that too, the online projects, like generators, air cameras, accessibility doors, and community initiatives, so I think we never remember them. I didn't get a chance to print out your formulary.
Sorry.
So I only have a copy that I had emailed. I wish everybody could have it on their case.
Yeah, they're probably not ready for print, probably lines that break or periods that don't even look.
Are we gonna go through it or no? I just had a couple of things that, I think it's getting very early, I'm just gonna.
Just, maybe another hard part of working in these parts, editing.
Thank you for writing.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't get this, let us work on this one. So could just be your first sentence, and we're down low, first part, ARPA wired, brought materials and services. Are we just put to all patrons, period, not from a walks of life? Because it's, I don't know, and that includes patrons who are unable to, can't say another word for me, to make it to the library by their own means.
I've already done work on this one.
You have, but I didn't get to print it. You know, when you see, I didn't.
No, no, you haven't seen, but I went through all of this and cleaned it out, refocused a bunch of stuff. So maybe we need to table the discussion in the room till then.
Can you send that out to everyone?
Sure. But I wanted, I wanted you to look at it and accept it as a progress.
Okay, so what's the process then? So should I not be looking at it to look at?
That's a good point. I think we need to maybe refine the process because if I get your, it's the morning of a meeting, I can't, I haven't, I haven't.
Of course.
Really of this.
I'm good doing whatever, you know, so I don't wanna create an extra step maybe because I just want to resent the reason we can do changes.
I, you know, I don't always get to it until I have time to get to it. And so, you know, I'm not looking at a schedule, an advanced schedule on this, but I am trying to land just about everything that comes in.
So maybe we, I think we should just table this for the next meeting. And we'll, or I'll look at what you have and send it out.
Yeah, accept what you like and revert to what you don't. So I'm sorry, yeah, it's a drag.
No, that's okay. I just didn't know if it was sent to us to look at, to do it, so I was just trying to be on top of it.
It was a little confusing because there were multiple things that all had the same name, and I got a little lost.
And we are really just getting into so much policy work.
Oh, and I want to actually commend you for this.
I have.
Because clearly this is stuff that we have sort of let slide for decades, some days. And it needs to be updated, and it needs to be edited in part because the primary way that people are going to access this information is through the website. And they may very well look at it only in themselves. And so one of the goals that I approach as an editor is how short can we get? Because, because sort of, you know, sort of elegance in writing is lovely, but it doesn't always do the job for the way people are actually using the information. So that's part of the approach to the table.
One thing I learned in a recent case, several book signings and such, um, findings. And one suggestion which I thought would be good one was to run all of our policies by legal. We have a town legal department and I have access to that, maybe if the sort of bill.
That's a good thing.
That's what I'd be pretty likely. And so we can do that once we get things refined.
Yes, yes, we don't want to be doing something that.
Right. An interesting thing, like with the behavior policy that we need to look at, again, because it's a little bit outdated. The, I can't remember which library it was, the library had a problem with a serious problem. And they wound up having to, it wasn't in their policy, and they got sued. Yep, so that example is the kind of thing that I think the legal department will be, like, well. I mean, it may make our policies ridiculous, to your point, ridiculously long.
I know, we certainly can't, I mean, lawyers have a tendency to do weird stuff.
Right.
And I'll just give you a very quick example from my life today, which is I received an invitation and asked for it from my financial company, Morgan Stanley, to a webinar on teenage use of the internet, which made no sense to me, why are the lawyer psychologists? At the very bottom, it said in small print, none of the opinions expressed are Meryl's, are Morgan Stanley's. I'm thinking, well, if you're using your net, your brand to, to do something, well, blow off. But listen, lawyer says asterisks, never mind.
Right.
That's a bad marketplace. I'm saying this happens a lot, where the lawyers have a completely different agenda from the people creating the document. And we have to be cognizant of that because we do have to be protected.
Well, I think mental health is an important one because there is a mental health crisis and they're gonna run into it, you know?
And it'd be really important to have something. And we have some issues that need, we need help with.
And do we have to direct act this to the legal table? Do we have to pass, pass it through?
Direct, I mean, they have, so they have hours and an email comes out from Town Hall's well, Department tense. And if you want to access a piece of caution, her office hours are gonna be this. And then, but if there's something in the meantime, I believe I could go through the property to maybe.
Is it Lisa Mee? Former mayor, new.
So we have a mayor.
Yeah, but now she's, she's everybody's lawyer. Smart person.
So, yeah, so I feel like I do have to preget access to it. As we start doing, working that into our workflow.
As we finalize with all our editing, I think then periodically you send them off to ask that they review it.
We have quite a few that are final.
Okay, start the process, don't overwhelm them.
Well, right.
Because just looking at the list of, you have the checklist of.
Probably prioritize.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably prioritize, it's the most important.
Yeah, something that you probably could create.
Right.
I just wanted to think, you were talking about people mostly using their phone.
Well, we just have to rely on this as an idea. I don't know about most examples, but very few people are gonna print anything out and look at it on a piece of paper.
My kids use their phones to act on the everything.
Yeah, but a lot of adults do too, or, you know, kind of moms that support story out, etc. So it could be on the phone, it could be on a tablet or something. But it's rarely gonna be a piece of paper that you turn and you absorb that information very differently.
And I was just thinking, it's honestly better writing from policies, shorten the segue. Because otherwise people are gonna be, what exactly is this?
Yeah, just.
You know, in general, I think.
But it would be on the website of the library, correct?
Holy god, it should be on the page, it should be.
Right.
Probably more than, we think about it. And I just say, I'm just very careful what websites are holding, where you click on a link and all you get is a PDF, that's a big mistake.
Yep, exactly. Okay, so then, looking at the other two policies here, one is the old one for purchase closing. And I did attach in there packets, edits, or edited version, so there are both. So the purchase policy, which one? The one that passed out, right, the one that passed out, great, that was the one I printed today. But which of this, we begin with?
Yeah, so the one that says, what happens in the first sentence?
Is that a closing policy? One of them says this document addresses and one says the purpose of this policy.
Oh, okay.
So the one that says this document addresses, both of them that are separated, written.
So this is improved?
It's document addresses. Yep, do you print it written?
Written was approved. Wasn't that? I thought we couldn't close unless someone told us we could.
So.
And it really wasn't your decision, it was.
Not mine at all.
Okay.
I, except. It's a real sticky widget because if you look, and I should have printed a policy that the town has on file. Basically, Tracy, or in her absence, Chief Police, can close municipal buildings.
Right.
I thought the board of trustees, as, I thought you had power at one point and now don't, is that right?
That's something that Paul Young, well, since you didn't say we had anything to do with it.
To close, okay. Where we run into a problem with this particular policy is what happened this last February. When I cried the whole way home and I've never been so scared when that last leave. And then severe, severe storms, Dorothy got stuck right down here, she was in tears, we're both on the phone with our husbands. Everybody else was shaking, it was, it was way out conditions on the highway and this much sludge and you couldn't see. And it was terrifying and we're not allowed to leave and some, you know, lady goes to Boston, like, not all staff lives within 10 minutes. Some do. So anyway, it was really scary and it was a big morale buster to be able to, like, their lives really didn't matter. Sounds dramatic, but it was dramatic, like it really was. I, at one point, I almost got run off by this eighteen miller and it was terrifying, even this many months later. So what to do? Is there any power? So there is a line in there, if you feel you need to go, if you don't feel safe or whatever, you won't get paid and you'll get paid for snow days anyway. So no staff has any kind of impetus to be early because they're gonna get dock wages. But do they have any kind of power or is it just if everybody decides this is not safe and nobody's here to stop the building, what happens? And does any of that?
Generally, you have to wait for somebody to clear a snow emergency in order to, I think statutorily, we don't have the authority. And we have, we're responsible for custody and management of the library, not the staff. When it comes to the staff, we have, we have one responsibility and it's the higher you. Other than that, we are responsible for the staff. So I think this sounds, you know, in our, the town's police is subject to the town policies.
Right.
So I think if there's change going to take place, passing through the town personnel board policy, then that's a rather tedious ongoing process and how you make that determination, I'm not sure. I'm sympathetic to it.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I would pull the plug in a heartbeat.
I wasn't sure if whether trustees are in charge of the building, so I guess I have questions around if all staff says, act of this, I'm out. The library can't be open. Does that need to be in here somewhere?
Well, it's saying it.
Isn't it that if you have to have at least two qualified, you know, the site?
Right.
Yep.
When does, when does happen? Did you ever get any clarity from Town Hall as to what the hesitation is to close? Pushback is, yeah, go home if you don't get paid.
All the other libraries are closed, I don't know, if they open them up, I mean, closed.
And were there other town departments that were held open as well? Because this sometimes.
You can W probably.
Because this sometimes happens, this sometimes happens on a day when a town hall doesn't happen to be open. And so.
Well, the problem is too, I mean, there's also policy of, you know, if they close, they don't get paid. Other libraries, they get paid because the town closes. So, I mean, we're not really like other towns.
We're not, or the state either.
Right, or, you know, or the state.
And so part of this may change, I don't know what's gonna be happening with the union that they're already working on. But I know this was a big deal for staff and quite fond of it, it would be one of the places they want more.
This is probably one of the impetus's for.
Yeah, even.
A back coming along.
So anyway, that's just some of the backstory. So is this staying, like it says here, the library never can be ordered to close in the library? I can't.
No, it's.
So, so I didn't, I didn't edit for content, I edited for style. Because I don't know the.
Right, so I do not have that power.
Right.
The old policy did.
Oh, 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 okay.
And that's why I wanted you all to see it, because it's actually.
I thought this was newly approved.
Yeah, this is, we looked at all the personnel policies and everything, so really it's under the town personnel policies. It's not a separate library.
If the school cancels, like if you get it rid of the lease, you can't do that either.
That would be by the town.
That would be your.
That's done by the regional school.
Most libraries will do something like that, isn't it? Actually, you can say that because some don't, there are some libraries, probably because of the, they have population. And so they're always able to fulfill that kind of, I don't know.
It's different all around, because we looked at a whole bunch of different policies.
Right.
And it's different all around, like Newbury Court, I think it said, the mayor closes.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we don't have that. So it's, I don't think we can, we can change, or we should correct it.
Well, I don't know if it needs to be deleted altogether because we can't have our own policy.
Well, if the library doesn't control the policy, then why does the library have a policy?
Right.
You're subject to the policies.
But everyone had to get rid of a policy once there is a policy.
So I guess the question was, is it a valid policy to start off?
Well, can't we just do emergency closing policy, just say, number of town blocks, the library follows, follows town.
Town procedures.
Procedures, yeah, or policies. Well, if somebody's looking for it, just in case they're looking for it, you can then say, redirect them to, maybe you can put a link there and they can get redirected.
And then more people just, people who are stuck here in the storm will understand.
Right, that's, yeah, that was one of the worst things, looking up in the different policies, personnel policies around different towns. Some never even mention stuff, others did, and, you know, you were like, wait a minute, shouldn't there be like a format that I can just go and look and say, okay? Yeah, but, you know.
I went to a high school that had headmasters, I was underground, but it was a day school, and the policy, he could make it to school, we couldn't make it to school.
So Trac's not coming?
Yeah, he would walk to school because it's, you know, like a five minute walk. We would be stuck in the stone, our parents generally driving there. So, you know, there's all Yankee tradition.
Oh, I believe men were for completely like that, didn't matter if he was sick as a dog, coming to infect everybody else. And the same with, with smelling magazine.
Well, the thing about that policy, and if we're open, I feel like it sends a message to the community that if not that, the library's open, they send them home. And so if people do show up here and they're like, oh, god, we need to go home, it's not safe.
Wow.
Well, this is clearly something that has to be worked on with the town, as things are able to be worked on. Because it's a bigger challenge. Is town aware of how hot this issue was? Is town aware of how not this issue was for the personnel?
Yeah.
Okay, so they know that this is.
Sure, it wasn't just the library issues, with not being able to get home.
Right. Yeah, except one of the other main departments, and those are the guys that are in the class, so.
Right, well, they can stay.
They can plod, they can plod their way, they can plod their way. So, if the town hall doesn't close, you need your own employees there, doing all the good sound.
Yeah, so it's a universal problem.
So, it's.
But we said that before, too. You know, I just think if you refer them to town policy.
Okay, so.
And I think it's, there is some benefit to having it there.
So, do we need to vote that through, or how is?
I think we need to have a new policy written. If I have the new version, then. We have to move and improve it at the next one. Here's what I wrote.
Yeah.
Where's the link?
So, revise to me.
Uh, okay, the next one is, the last one here is about the reality policy. This. We will water revises again when we eventually get security cases.
Do you have to tell people?
Yes. You have to post that.
Having the signage.
So, yeah, so that will be.
So, this is, we don't have confidentiality policy on our, so we leave one on our own, you know, and then.
Yeah, now, this, you can amend it if and when we ever get the money to do the cameras.
Right.
And again, the signage, we go up at that time to advise people with the cross screen cameras in operation. So, policy that has my edits, has the second graph, says confidentiality extends to emergency cases regardless of age.
Which is.
Second.
Yes. And if it was something, you know, the last line. Except in certain emergency cases, at the discretion of the director, if that will ask, if a child was lost, or, you know, or an elderly person was missing, or the last scene, that kind of, you know what I mean? Those kind, so it allows to be helpful.
And you also have Janet, too, for people to be confidential, they don't want Catherine now, or anybody else, and they're checking out.
Yep.
There's an extra period in the middle of the third paragraph. So, are there amendments to this?
Just that period.
Okay. Can I move that the policy to be accepted as with, with just that? Motion made, accepted. Okay.
And then, we have an article in the chapter's report, so we can probably, the delivery policy update. We'll be seeing what the program next to meeting.
So, I think the only policy we can use, confidentiality.
Also, the next meeting, so at the next meeting, we will have, which will be quick, the emergency closing, and we'll be at one. We'll have one delivery edits, and I do hope to bring one with new policy each meeting. So, I'm gonna take a look at which one is the most pressing.
So, if you, if you send it to me before.
Yeah.
Mass delivered, with all the other, with a packet.
That's a great idea.
That may give me a lot of time to look at it.
And if you can't get to it, then we just.
Well, no, the thing is, that email comes in, has 19 things attached to it.
Yes.
And, you know, after I get out from under the couch.
But there's no, there's no pressing need to have.
No, but I, but I, but I'd like to do it in a way that where the.
That's a great idea.
The supply chain is smoother.
I like it. Okay, so other, this is, I guess, we want to talk about history around cable, a little bit. But I think, I think I have a good idea to have a move over that. You have a meeting coming up?
Yes.
I think there may be one to other people, I don't know if they want me part of your meeting, or the meeting here.
Just the one email that I get, Terry's gonna join me to be part of that meeting.
Great. Did you see Dana's email? Did you want her to go to your meeting, or are you?
No.
I think it was her separate. Can I let her know that you have?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Let her know, it's a way meeting on Thursday if she wants. And again, I wouldn't, because it's a meeting that I arranged with Barbara, and I, you know, don't want to feel like I would want to bring additional people into it if she doesn't want that. I did check with her before I extended the invitation to Terry to join us. And based on Terry's involvement with the genealogy club.
Yeah.
In being a trustee, she has both perspectives, so it might have made sense to bring that in.
Did you want to ask Barbara, if sorry, if Dana is invited to that one too, or?
You better schedule for tomorrow, right?
No, I have to get back to her, I have to, I have to get back to my desk.
All right, now, she reached out to you with a date, so.
Okay.
For tomorrow, at 2:00.
Okay.
She might not have much to talk about, too.
Right.
Because you responded to her.
No, that was somebody else.
Oh, but Dina responded to it as well.
Yeah, I did, because she still wants to.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
But, but I would say, I mean, clearly, the email, the original email, didn't have, reduced the result than anticipated. And, so, there may be ways, general communications like this, that you have to think a little carefully, you know, sometimes about where the audience is coming from, what the lead of the article should be, and all that stuff.
And we did, it was from Barbara. Yeah, I'm, I think it, the reason I sent it out now, three months ahead, in advance, I asked for it, but. I have a list of other people who are interested in genealogy club, and I didn't want to leave anybody off, like. You know what I mean?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm just trying, I just look at the bare bones, I have the same content, right? So, so I thought I said, okay, it didn't make the splash you wanted, so.
Yeah.
How do we make, make that happen less frequently in the future, if possible?
And I'm just suggesting that perhaps sometimes that's not going to be able to.
All right.
I had read it too, and I thought it was, someone had something in their minds, they didn't read the whole thing, and they didn't read it correctly. And, and that's fine, people, I misread things all the time.
True.
So, I just thought it was a rather extreme response to something that it wasn't even really.
No, right, seems to be a theme in the news.
Yeah. That too, that too, but, yeah.
It's back to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll take the opportunity to have.
I think that's, that's best.
Have a discussion, and, you know, I think that's, we're open to input, I mean, that was key.
Well, that's why it went out now, it's sort of for September, you know, this starts in September.
Yeah.
So, you get the feedback now, so hopefully by the time you get to September, it's next.
Yes.
Any misunderstandings can be smoothed out.
Yeah.
That's the approach we're taking, I think if Dana wants to meet, she can reach out to you, and that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. We have the same message, we're looking to address interest in the town, it was, you know, out of long range plan.
Well, from Cheryl's email that came in, I think, I think maybe how they took it was not as I intended it. I intended it as expansion of the genealogy club, I think they took it as, we're not going to talk about genealogy anymore, which wasn't at all.
And I have to tell you, it was an outsider, not knowing anything. I didn't take that way either, I took it as you intended it to be. So, that's why I'm saying, I don't think there's fault in what she said.
Right, no, absolutely not.
No, I think some people just, they misread things, because they've got something on their mind, that's all.
Absolutely.
And that happens to everybody.
And that's fine, if you want to find out what that is, it's been tried to address it, and need that made as best we possibly can, and that's, you know.
And I had been going to the genealogy for two reasons, really, because I was interested in genealogy myself.
Right, right.
And I could represent some of the authority of the library. In the past, there were not so many opportunities to mix. There was a staff member who was assigned to, from the library, to the original, literally, group. And then, that person left, and there wasn't anyone left. And that was before I was on the board, too. So, there's a little bit of a curious pursuit, I think.
And I think the message that was put forth a year or so ago, of local interest, and the attention that it needed.
Yeah.
I think we had a rather substantial meeting in one night.
Yes.
We had people, we had town administrative, we had the historical commission, we had us.
Yeah.
It was quite a group, and we discussed the need to focus on local interest, thus, leading to hiring the activists to identify what's there.
Right.
And how to blend that into what's in town hall, and how to expand on all of this, and make it part of the library, and that's what we're trying to do now.
Right, how do I ensure that all the people who are, who are in the genealogy to follow were at that meeting?
Right.
Well, the thing of it is too, is I wouldn't necessarily use the historical portion of it, but I might use the genealogy.
The genealogy.
And I'm not tied to biofield. I mean, I think it's certainly his, interesting history, that was. But if I were going to be looking at genealogy, my background, it wouldn't have anything to do.
Right.
With the history. So, I think that's where they mistook what was being said.
There's two things that are happening. One is the local focus, which we ran those programs, and asked the town, do we agree the town that I remember? I don't think we'll do that in some part of the future. It's sidetracked with COVID.
I don't think we can talk about that from Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, it's good, I think it gives people an opportunity to come and sit and talk, and share memories of the town, and it's interesting, the way you grew up in town. You have a different perspective. I understood that there was a difference between biofield and old town, I didn't understand there was a difference between South Nubry and Nubry. I mean, South Biofield. South Biofield.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so there was, because I came to.
Where am I? I'm at the church, myself.
And so, the people who were in history on South Biofield, you know, were very clear and identified, because it's such a meeting. And that was fascinating to me, some things you learn just by that. Absolutely. Anyway.
We have new technology that do with the owl, that should help facilitate those meetings.
Yeah, so I think that's something we want to talk about, the waterfall, and that's the local interest, that makes that an interesting interaction. I remember as a kid coming up from Revere, going to Eventually, you know.
Oh, wow. We just had.
Yeah, so.
Oh, wow. State your priorities right now.
I had no idea that was.
It wasn't ever easy parking near here. Near here, Revere Beach, yeah, yeah.
But this was my adventure. I'm just getting here.
Oh, did you? You were both. Okay.
So, it just.
Sorry, I was on the way out, just about the time.
It's two separate things, really, but we have the same person doing it all, and it's really, this is really small.
Really, really.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
You are a ring bearer. You sound Biofield.
It's South Biofield, that's what it was.
Through this area, when I first moved to Boston, that was still there, and it really sounded like a step one, and I went.
Oh, okay, actually? Okay. We need to pick a table for the next meeting. Did you go to the camp?
We did, did we?
I did, I went to Columbus.
So, we're only doing the third set?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, Linden Square.
Linden Square. Who's the Chinese?
Four years?
Wait.
So, I would look so high.
Yes, yes, we're working, yeah.
Together.
Would you rather bump it a week?
Yeah, I would bump it.
Would that be?
Sure.
The 25th?
Uh, yeah.
Of July?
July.
Same time?
Seems a lot.
Yeah.
You're not going to care what's going on in the meeting if you do it the other day. They call it out.
Do we follow the agenda?
Motion to adjourn, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. Okay, motion made in second, we're adjourned.